The other takeaway from this data is just the incredible effort that was made by the teaching staff in the spring. To to reach as many kids as they can, they could virtually, and I think you can't discount the or discredit the work that the parents and the students did at home. To maintain those skills, to be reading, to be doing math, and I you see that in in these scores. I don't know if there's any specific questions about the Ames Web Data Report. The only other thing I have is the upcoming events Diane alluded to her end of some semester are our trimester ends. December 4th, and we will be sending out communication to to see where people are with the with the model that they've chosen. And December 5th, we'll have our picture makeup tag.
Alrighty, any other comments, questions?
Actually Ace, you just said something that is interesting to me, and I guess the question would apply to all the principles. Are you going to be sending something out to parents to see, or you're gonna wait for people to come to you if they want to? If if they want to change from remote to cohorts or from cohorts to remote, I'm just curious about that process.
So I was the last one talking, I'll take that one. You can see Carol smiling because we we just were working on a letter recently. That should be, correct me if I'm wrong, we're sending it home this Friday, right, in our weekly communication? Just as as an opportunity to check in with parents and and see if there is a desire to change.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, let's move on to John Berlin Memorial.
Good evening, everybody. It's so much easier to go after Ace because basically he's already said all the good stuff, so what Ace said. We also did a lot, we've done a lot of work around the Ames Web testing. It was the best way for us to capture where kids stood when they got back, and if you've looked it over, you kind of see. Those early literacy scores are not where we'd like them to be, and part of that is just because those youngest children weren't with us enough. It's a huge challenge, I can tell you, I was just talking with a couple of the second grade teachers today. And they're talking about the quick recovery kids are making, but they both commented on how far behind they were. So it's good that we've got them at least some of the time right back in front of us, and that really helps. As kids got older, what was interesting, and we all kind of saw the same thing at Berlin. Was the relative strength of the literacy scores is apparent to us that children kept reading when they were at home last spring. Because there was not a lot of loss, and these the scores we're looking at, they're all percentile, national percentile scores. So they've stayed kind of where they were, which in most of the cases is a very strong place to be. I wouldn't have expected much difference if they'd been there all the time. Ace is right, teachers did just an amazing job. Kind of guiding kids and their parents through that that process last spring, and parents did a great job. Contributing to that and helping their kids stay engaged and aligned because I hear it over and over, it is no small feat to get kids to focus on schoolwork from the kitchen. They feel like they should be doing other things. The math scores, on the other hand, and we've had some conversations around this. Were consistently below where they had been last winter. And a part of that is just math is so cumulative in nature. If you stop doing math all the time, you start to lose some of those conceptual skills. And that has really kind of been the focus of our remediation effort. We really want to bring kids back into line with where we know they can be. Math has historically been a strong suit at Berlin Memorial, so we're we're looking to bring those kids back. That's the Ames Web piece of this, if anybody has any Ames Web questions. Excellent. And then the other thing I'm sure you're all aware that uh. Due to a couple of positive tests in my school, we're all remote for the next week and a half. It was, it's been an interesting experience. We spent a lot of time last summer. Planning for this eventuality, but once it finally came, we realized what was going to work and what was not going to work. And I have to tell you that the teachers in my school have just been unbelievable in their determination to make this. An effective time for kids, they don't want to lose the gains that they're starting to see. They've all been there, they're all working hard. We got over the tears and the frustration, and now we're into how can we make this better for everybody involved? But we're all looking forward to next Thursday when the kids are back at school. That's about all I've got.
Any questions, comments? So are there particular? You know, how how are the staff trying to address these? The slippage in math, I mean, are there resources there for for the time there?
We're very lucky, it's more the resources, we've adopted a lot of online tools. That kids enjoy using, they're like math games. But they're very focused on the standards, the kids can't see that part, they think they're having fun, we fooled them. We use Freckle a lot, especially with the older kids, which is an online program, there are a couple of other. Online things that we do as well, and what's nice is that teachers can assign. Individual kids different lessons based on their specific weaknesses. And allow them to grow there, the teacher can see everybody's results, so kids only see their own results. It's been a very positive experience.
Good, good. So for the elementary side, I guess I'm wondering. When is the next Ames Web assessment, is it January or?
Yeah, winter.
Yeah.
Right after we get back from the holiday break.
Right, it's hard to make progress right in this. You know, from Thanksgiving to Christmas, it's a sort of a. A difficult period to really get some traction. I always remember making a lot of progress come January when you had solid. School for a while, and so hopefully we'll see some real gains in the spring. Alright, so let's move on to Policy Subcommittee. That's.
Susan, before you do that, can can Carol report out on the edgenuity before you start doing?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Sure, so I I had sent a copy of this report this morning, an update on the edgenuity, and then the elementary bridge program on behalf of Superintendent Zangie. So as far as edgenuity, there are 27 students currently enrolled in the program. That's down from our original number of 33 students, they had an ad drop time period of about 10 days, some went to homeschooling. And others decided to return back to Toronto at that time, so. In mid October, and based on a directive from the Mass Commissioner of Education. We opened up the window to students to return to the Toronto hybrid model earlier than what we had originally planned, which would be. On the end of the first semester in January. And instead, we opened up the window to the end of the first quarter, which would return students to the classroom on or around November 18th. So the number of students that are returning or have returned to Toronto because of that are five. That's so bringing the number in edgenuity now down to 22. The number of students that then chose to attend a virtual academy during this time period were three. We lost three students in the sixth grade to a virtual virtual academy. At this time, there's a teaching staff, all the as far as teaching staff, all the students are linked to a teaching staff member in every course. And Jessica Gallagher, I have to say, she's our district coordinator for the program, and she. Continues to do an exceptional job communicating with parents, supporting students, troubleshooting with edgenuity. And problem solving with the administrators and guidance and special educators who are also involved with students on remote learning. And they have set times where they meet with those students on with their IEPs and support them in that way. As far as elementary bridge program, we current have a current enrollment of 40 students from BES, 15 students from BMS. And as Ace mentioned, we do have a letter coming out on Friday. To offering these parents an option to return their students to school for the start of the second trimester, which begins December 7th. Or inviting them to move into or inviting them to move into the remote learning model. And that was the original plan that we the elementary schools had in terms of providing that transition, and we said we would do that. The end of the first trimester, and in that particular bridge plan, our staffing includes one math teacher, one ELA teacher. One science and one social studies teacher, and each of those teachers teach all five grade levels, K through five. So that that's where we're at right now with our remote learning models.
And you have, is there any formal way to solicit feedback from people about their experience and ways they feel it could? The experience could be strengthened or?
We we did have some questions on the recent survey for parents, I know that the elementary. Parents did just complete a survey specifically for that their plan, and I believe that Jessica has sent out something. For edgenuity parents as well on that, but she's so constantly in touch with parents and students that. I know she's she's been right on top of it every daily with these folks.
Great, awesome, thank you. Any questions for Carol?
I don't have a question, I just I saw the report, but I can't seem to open it, I don't know if it's just me. Of other school committee members have that issue, just to miss.
This was Carol, Carol's report?
Yeah. This morning, who Christie and Jeff, I'm wondering if it has to do with ownership of the document, so we'll we'll check on that, I'll touch base with Christie and make sure you get that.
Yeah, thank you, great, I don't think I saw that either.
Alright. It appears to be locked.
Okay, thank you for following up on that, Carol. Great, let's move on to the Policy Subcommittee then. We Cliff and I met with. Jeff this past month on two topics. One was to close the loop on some technology policies that we had felt a little while back, we should be reviewing, given that we're. Putting such emphasis on hybrid and the remote learning, we better take a look at our technology. Policies, make sure that they're appropriate for this time. And we asked for input from the Central Office on those and. The policies in the shared drive, the revisions noted there came. Primarily from the Central Office team, and and you'll see that most most of those changes are. Non substantive, I would say they're relatively minor. So I. Think those will be easy to move forward, this is considered a first read this month, and they'll come for your vote next month. So I just do want to check in though to see if anybody had any questions about those four technology policies and the revisions noted on them. Okay, and then the other topic is more time sensitive and. Came to us from the nurses in the schools and with discussion with Jeff. The Policy Subcommittee has made a recommendation. For in addition to the EBC supplement policy that we approved. I believe it was in the last meeting. EBC supplement was the overarching policy that was. Targeted this COVID period and was designed to ensure that. The superintendent in particular had the authority and flexibility that he would need. To make changes according to how COVID was unfolding in the district. This this topic. That was brought forth, we felt belonged in that policy, it's COVID specific. And has to do with the. Requirements for reentry to school after traveling out of Massachusetts into. What? We deem sort of the red states or or states that are higher risk for for COVID infections, the rate of COVID infections. The state guidance on that says that if. Adult staff or students over 10. Travel out into the into these red states and then return to Massachusetts. That they need to quarantine for 14 days or. Produce negative results on a COVID test taken 72 hour anywhere within 72 hours of of returning. And that you have to quarantine until you get negative results, until you receive those negative results. And. What we felt, we agreed with the nurses nurses sentiments on this is that. It's really safe safest for our school communities. If we simply say, when you return from a red zone state, you need to quarantine for 14 days. Obviously, in the three day period that you can go get your your COVID test, you could still pick up. This virus in that time period. And also the state says that students or children under 10 do not need to be tested. And we've we feel they should be tested or should be quarantined, so what we decided in the end was to recommend. That families that travel and staff that travel during the holidays, if they leave and go to. The high risk states. That when they return, they need to just quarantine for 14 days, students as well, all ages of students. Cliff, Jeff, is there anything else you want to? Add to that, we did feel it was time sensitive because people are making their vacation and holiday plans now, so we felt we should. Discuss and vote on this. Proposed policy tonight to expedite information flow out to families. Cliff and Jeff?
I'll let Jeff go first if he has anything.
No, I was just going to say that Susan, that it was it is time sensitive, and I know the nurses wanted to get a vote on it.
Yeah. I was listening, I believe it was on NPR this morning, but I'm not sure what news source I was listening to. And I don't know who does these surveys predicting holiday travel, you know how you always hear about it? The the day before Thanksgiving, there's going to be eight zillion people traveling or whatever. But this report was really interesting to me, and it said that. They believe that 56% of American families will travel outside their state for the holidays. And that, which I found stunning, given. Everything we're involved in, and that. Particular areas that people would be traveling to as best they can determine are Florida. Clearly a red state, and I don't mean politically. And Arizona. And what was the third one? All of them were like, good grief. You know, they're going into the the jaws of of the of the beast, you know? So I, you know, I don't know what they base this stuff on, but. When I heard that, I thought, oh, this policy is really important. So that's it, that's all I got.
So the, just to be clear, the language that we're proposing to add to to this. EBC supplement policy is that all staff and students are expected to comply with Governor Baker's travel orders. In addition, if staff or students of any age travel outside of states deemed low risk. That staff and students would be required to quarantine for 14 days regardless of test results.
Can I just, I have two questions. My first question would be, is there a place that we could put, if we move forward with this? On our school or our district website, what the current red states are, because they're constantly changing. So because I don't know, if I would decide to go to, say, Rhode Island or New Hampshire, I would want to know ahead of time. You know, is this a red state because it's constantly changing and then my.
Actually, low risks, if you travel out of a low risk state, so currently the low risk states are Hawaii, Washington. DC, Maine, New Hampshire, New York, and Vermont, it's very, it's a very small number of states.
So that's good to know, but but. I know Rhode Island was a safe state, and then it was a red state, and now it's.
Right, yeah.
And my other question on top of that was just so that parents would know, because if, you know, planning ahead, you would want to know where are we currently? And then my other question would be, how does that affect attendance? So if a family were to go to, say, Florida, then they come back and they have to quarantine for 10 days. How does that affect attendance? Do they then do remote? Does it work against them? I think. Those are just questions I would want to know the answer to before.
Yeah.
Can I say something about that, Susan?
Yeah.
So policy sets the policy, but the things you're talking about, Lori, are procedures.
Okay.
And those would be determined by the administration. If the school committee says, we think it is that in the best interest of the school community to implement this policy, and we all agree to that. Then it's it'll be the responsibility of the administrative team to actually articulate how we're going to handle that.
Gotcha.
Not us, I mean, I don't want to tell the superintendent how to handle it.
Oh, no, I don't either, I think I was just thinking if I were to. To vote on this, I would just kind of want to know the answers to those questions, but I understand what you're saying, Cliff.
And also the other challenge is that. A state's low risk status can change tomorrow.
Right.
Or or a state that is currently. A higher estate could become a low risk state by Christmas, I mean, we we don't know that.
It could change while you're traveling.
Yeah.
Susan, you're right.
I will tell you that I I did have a discussion with Russ about staff, because this came up during the reentry plan. And so so the question was, if they if they if they had to quarantine. Would they need to use sick time? And so we agreed, and it's actually part of your the MOU you you signed. That if it was, if it was exposure during the school time. Then then not quarantine, they wouldn't have to use sick time, but if they traveled. Outside to a high risk state, which forced them into a quarantine, then they would need to use their sick time. So that was the issue, the issue was, I mean, they could use sick time, it's not like they don't get paid for it. The issue from the MTA is was what? Are you gonna are you gonna make the teachers chew up their sick time? For quarantine, that's where that MOU came from. If we ask them to quarantine because of it's exposure at school, school related, then they don't use their sick time. And and it's it is a blurry line sometimes, but certainly if you take your kids to Disney Disney World for a week. That's and and then you come back and you have a teacher in the school. That's that's pretty obvious that you traveled outside. So you have to, you know, you have to decide if you want to take that risk or not. And I didn't have the discussion with them about students, so that's something we will need to discuss.
But thank you for reminding me of that, Jeff, I I had forgotten about that, and I that is a good reminder.
And I isn't the COVID, the COVID map, isn't that, isn't there already a link on the district webpage for this?
I think there is now that you say that, yeah.
I thought there was.
First thing when it pops up.
So Lori, have we addressed your questions?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, any anyone else? Okay. Well, that will be coming for a vote in the business section of the meeting, so. Hopefully, we can proceed with that and get the word out of those. Consequences as you think about holiday plans, and it's very difficult, it's a very difficult time. Of year to make decisions about being with family, and it's just good to know. And to be able to plan for return as well as leaving. Sometimes we do need to be with family in other places, and it's just, we just need to be able to plan accordingly. And be safe, the the goal of this really, we have to remind everybody is is about the. Safety and well being of the community at large, not just individuals. And that's that's part of what we're looking for here is to really pay attention to keeping our schools as safe as possible. So learning can continue uninterrupted. So let's move on to goals, school committee goals. Angela and Lori, is there anything new to report for goal one?
Lori made some nice changes to our goal one after our last meeting, including something about. Meeting with someone on the superintendent's staff and. I think edits automatically get updated to your copy of the goal, but. I don't know, I thought I had sent an email to request it to be put back into the packet, but I don't see it in there with goal two, but. I can reset, share it with everybody, I don't. But I think if you search for the school committee goal, I think it's called new member.
If you refresh your, if you could refresh your your Google Drive, it should pop up.
Okay, thanks, Christie.
That's great, thank you. Good, all we need is a new member to try it out on. That's really what we need next in order to make progress with goal one, I think you've done really good work. Putting together a plan for supporting somebody new. Coming in, so we just want that that person to walk in the door. Alright, goal two, Cliff or Keith, an update on goal two?
I'll take this one. So I did speak with Jimmy and meet with Jimmy, Mr. Spencer. On the community engagement goal. I believe. Did y'all get the the email of?
The document, the documents in the shared drive.
Correct, yeah, I mean, I I let's just put it this way, we started it. So that's a positive thing, I can just read the goal that that we came up with. To increase and improve upon current school committees. Community engagement, including but not limited to use of social media, socialization of community feedback. Community visibility and involvement in activities focused on building for student learning. At Boston Berlin Regional School District, so that's the goal that we came up with. Does anybody have any questions? Because I I was just going to say a couple of things, no, okay.
What were your thoughts when you read it, committee members? Did you feel like something that's on the mark and that we're ready to invest in as a committee? Or are suggestions you would make?
Alright, I think we're off to the shortest school committee meeting ever. Yeah, so I I plan on, if you see that in the report, I plan on meeting with with Jeff. Sooner, and we were gonna gonna try to meet biweekly or triweekly. And just come up with a plan and include, obviously include other members of the community in this. In this committee, just to get feedback from from them. Yeah, I'm pretty excited to take this on, just because this is something that I feel my strengths would be useful for the school committee.
Good, and so you'd be bringing some. It said policies and practices, I think it referred to developing. Some policies and practices that you, I think you were going to bring them back to the school committee.
Correct, correct.
And so one thing I would just request, if if you get into the policy zone, is that you don't leave the policy subcommittee out of the loop. If 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 policies need to be revised or revisited or new policies need to be developed. To please let me know, and we can include discussion of that as part of the policy subcommittee, or we can come to you. And join your your meeting when you're developing those, just to make sure that the policy subcommittee stays in the loop with those, and. If we have information about other policies that we've worked on that relate to these or something, we can add some value to those discussions.
Sure, absolutely. One thing I just want to point out, which I thought was interesting. There were a few Facebook pages from school committee, school committees in Massachusetts. And I just went back and looked, and now there's currently only one.
Oh.
Reading, Massachusetts, I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
But I just thought that was interesting because I thought that that possibly would be a good idea. However, I think a lot of them took it off, so it may not be a good idea, so we'll check that out. However, I think a lot of them took it off, so it may not be a good idea, so we'll, we'll check that out.
Yeah, and you might stay in touch with, um, Dorothy Presser at MASC around that because they may be able to tell you what the trends are with different social media and school committees.
I think that's a great suggestion about, um, uh, liaising with, that's not a word, creating a conversation with Dorothy Presser. About that. I do remember the last, I mean, SC conference I went to. I went to a workshop. Oh, no, I was a panelist. I forgot about that. I was a panelist. And, um, and there was a lot of hubbub in the room about social media. And a lot of school committees were expressing how they got burned by social media. And, um, uh, this is just a general theme, nothing specific. And that, you know, they were strongly urging other school committees to be very careful how they proceed. Because as we know, the blogosphere and the internet can be a very dangerous place. Um, and, uh, so that fact that there's only presently one Facebook page left.
There, there was, because I, I checked.
That may be, that may be, uh, telling us something.
Yeah, exactly. Yes. Yeah, Reading is currently the only one.
Yeah, yeah, the role, MASC can add probably insight into the, what's happening there. They may be watching those trends or informing those trends, um, through their work with districts. So they may, you may get some interesting insight from talking with them.
Okay.
Um, Jim, Jim knows how to contact Dorothy easily. That would be interesting. It might add to your understanding of what the issues are there. Thank you.
Idea, but.
Makes the whole backup just a little bit. Uh, but thank you for doing the work, both, both, um, teams there for doing that work and advancing the goals. Um, and we'll continue to check in to see what's happening next month on those. So, uh, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, Lori and I, took a look at, based on the, um, decision at last, the last school committee meeting, that the one change we wanted to, uh, make to the school superintendent's evaluation process was to just change the form itself. So that there were spaces for, uh, for school committee members to provide feedback, make comments on each of the superintendent's goals. In the original DSE superintendent evaluation form, there are only comment sections on the administrative standards, not on the superintendent's goals. So you'll see in the revised version in the shared drive. I've added in, um, uh, Jeff's goals for this year and the focal indicators that he identified. And added the comment boxes, uh, for each of those goals. Pretty straightforward, but let me just check to see if anybody had any questions about that form, because we'll be voting on that tonight. Jeff looked at it, said it looked fine. Okay, good. So I think we're ready to move on to the business items. Unless there's anything else on the table. All right. Uh, the first item is to approve the home, approve the home rule petition for the election of school committee members. And, uh, just wonder if Cliff, you want to say anything about this item since it wasn't on the discussion list here?
Sure. Hopefully you all remember why, we have had to, um, go the home rule petition route. We managed as a school committee through no one's fault to miss a deadline for getting our election on the November 2nd ballot, ballot. And so we had to come up with a process by which we could hold an election. Uh, and, uh, so the school committee through, its chair and myself, um, and our attorney had been in consultation with the towns on how, this once in a lifetime election could be held. And, um, all of the ways it could be conducted. I will say that it was quite a long process. Whenever you have a large group of people consulting on a document, you know how that goes. So Russ did the original draft. It was reviewed by each town's council, by each town's select board, by each town's, uh, town administrator. I don't know who else reviewed it. There were people who reviewed it. Uh, all the town clerks. And they kept, they, they would come back with suggestions and, some suggestions Russ explained, you know, couldn't be done outside the, outside the provisions of law. And, um, so he would redraft the document. It would then go to DSE for review because those attorneys have to review it. And then it would go back to the towns and they'd get more comments. So it's been a long journey. Creating this document. I called Russ this morning and said, uh, you know, is there anything in particular that, um, you are unhappy with or that I should be highlighting for the committee? And he said, no, he said, I think we've come up with, with a good document. It, uh, it's very specific and very particular. So it, it gives guidance for how we're to proceed. It, it just got reviewed by DSE and got its blessing. So the vote tonight is, uh, to approve this document. Which, uh, Russ recommends we do. And then it will, um, I guess it will next go to the towns for their select boards to vote on. Once that happens, um, the document will be given to the local legislators of the towns. I don't know whether it goes to the senator or the representative or both. Um, and since we're not in the same district, Spoilston and Berlin, that's four different representatives. So it goes to them and they sponsor it and ideally goes to the legislature and gets approved. Russ said that we're doing a home rule petition because it's believed that that's the quickest way to resolve the problem. As the home rule petition states, this is a one-time election. Uh, following this, our elections will be in the state cycle in November. And I think that's it.
Are, are there any parts to this in particular that you think we should be aware of that are different from what we originally understood this process to be like? Very particular question, so maybe you don't.
It's a very particular question. The document, it, it can act as a blueprint. I think what I would recommend committee members read is to read the document through. It articulates when the town clerks have to be notified. Like, you know, every little step has been laid out. You know, and, and some of the, 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 the recommendations from the towns are, are not in this because, between Russ's opinion and Desi's opinion, they were not appropriate. And, uh, so I suspect that, you know, there are some people in the town that don't love this document, but, um, but I think it's a, I, I think I would see it personally, I would see it. I don't know if Russ would see it this way. I see it as a bit of a compromised document, but a document that is very clear and very specific. So, um.
Thank you, thank you, Cliff. Are, are there, uh, questions from the committee? About the content or process?
No, I thought the document was really clear and I feel like the way it's set up is as close to our regional agreement as we could have, the way they specified the terms and which town members were going to have this year terms and, I, 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 I thought that was good.
Yeah.
I have no problems with it.
Right, um, you know, the, the, it does protect our regional agreement. It, you know, it doesn't tamper with our regional agreement. It, it allows us to move forward and solve this particular problem. Of having, you know, having a preliminary election so that we can have, members elected in the way the, the regional agreement wants us to be elected.
Yeah.
So, but I, I would say to the committee, it leaves our regional agreement intact. Which I think we would all agree needs to be left intact. So, yeah, I don't want to say more than that.
Yeah, that's great. Very helpful. Thank you so much. Um, and thank you for your input on that too, Angela. Um, all right, so, um, could I have a motion to approve the home rule petition for the election of school committee members?
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, any further discussion?
So we don't have to do any special town election. It's just approved by the Board of Selectmen and then it goes to our state reps to.
That's, I, I questioned Russ on that this morning because that was my understanding. And he said, yes, once we've approved it, the boards, the select boards have approved it. It then gets handed off to the, um, the legislature for action.
Okay. Good. Thank you for clarifying. All right, roll call vote. Keith?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
And an aye for me. Okay, uh, so that passes unanimously. Onward, back to this, to the Boards of Selectmen. All right.
Oh, may I ask one question? Would you like me to continue in the process and notify Russ and let him take it on, or does the committee want to take it on now?
Uh, well, I would love for you to stay, just stay right there and follow it all the way through to the finish line, frankly. I'd like to know that, you know, we have that point person still just following it all the way. We don't want any gaps here.
I'm not trying to abandon the job. It's just that, you know, it's just, I want to make sure.
Okay, I would appreciate that. And unless Jim, Jim indicates differently, um, I would support that.
Okay.
All right, could we have a, um, a motion to approve the amended superintendent evaluation form with those additional comment boxes and Jeff's 2021 goals inserted?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion questions?
No, thank you, Susan, for doing that.
Yeah, good job.
You're, you're welcome. All right, roll call vote, Keith?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
And I am an aye also, so that passes unanimously. Number three, accept $100 donation from an anonymous donor to grade five at the Berlin Memorial School for Educational Supplies. Uh, motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion about that donation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I love these little moments of generosity, really, really helpful and a difficult time in school, so it's a bright spot. We thank you. Keith?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
And I for me, passes unanimously. Number four. Approve Bethany Johnson as student teacher under the supervision of Tara, Tara Cos- how do you say her name? Cosia? Cosiac, I'm sorry, at Boylston Elementary. Uh, we have a motion to approve the student teacher arrangement.
So moved.
Keith seconds. Any questions about that? Okay, roll call vote, Keith?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
And an aye for me.
I'm just trying to imagine being a student teacher virtually.
Yeah, really interesting, uh, time to be a student teacher. And, you know, they don't get all the normal experiences that they might, they might need to in their student teaching time. And yet they get different, a whole different set of experiences that may be informative as well, but definitely very different. February speaks to a need to rethink, uh, how this next cohort of new teachers entering schools shall be supported and mentored uh, in, when school is back face to face. Be interesting to see. Uh, and the last item is, um, a motion to approve policy EBC supplement, the addition of the travel, policy.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions before we vote? All right, Keith?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Cliff?
Aye.
And an aye for me. So that passes unanimously and we ask that the, that Jeff, uh, that word gets spread out quickly so people can integrate that policy change in, as they make their plans for the holidays. Policy of the four IJ policies there have to do with technology are on the first read will come for a vote next month. And then, um, we just have the next meeting is December 15th. Any other items before we adjourn?
Um, I just want to remind you all that I took one for the team on Saturday, that beautiful day. I spent three hours in your delicate assembly. Wasn't that painful, um, all those resolutions passed except that very last one, which we were going to say no to anyway. Have to do with the attendance. They tabled that resolution, so.
You, you deserve an award for that. Well, I forgot about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Angela.
Anyway, and I have to say, the speaker in the morning was really good. I don't know if anyone sat in on that. She was phenomenal.
Who was it?
I didn't catch her name. She's from KW something. Send it to you. I think the admin team might know about her. She's got a book coming out. She's so.
This was on, this was the equity piece.
Yes, on equity. She's amazing.
I was going to attend that and then ended up not. I'm sorry, I missed it now.
I'll send her name. I meant to grab it before.
Yeah, if there are resources posted or a link to her talk or anything, would you forward it to the committee so we might watch it offline?
Yeah, MASC usually does that, don't they?
Yeah, I think it might be on their website.
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe if somebody, if, uh, somebody wants to push it out to us, it might be more likely that we might watch it than if we have to go to the website and get it.
I'll do that. I'll hold your hand.
Thank you.
If it's really, if it's a really good presentation, perhaps if some members wanted to commit to seeing it and then have a conversation virtually about it, that might be.
Right, that could be sort of a workshop session.
Just an idea.
And that, and, and it relates directly to, um, Jeff's equity goal this year too, I imagine. So it'd be good for school committees to stay up on that topic, very important topic.
Yeah, then Jeff could say when he's doing his final report on his goals, he could say, I got the school committee to attend a workshop virtually on equity.
Oh, and which we should be doing. That, it's a really important topic.
Yeah.
Um, so Jeff, just last comment is that, you know, there were some topics that came up in the Q and A today. Hope that you can address offline in the, uh, either an email, but also in your, maybe your Friday, Friday newsletter to families, maybe a place you, you might, uh, address any topics that are important for the whole school community.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, any last comments? Thank you all for spending your evening with us.